Hey.
You're good?
All right, would you all join us for the pledge allegiance, please? What's allegiance? Right, good evening, everybody. Soon we're all here for the special town meeting. Everybody's seen the warrant or we have a special town meeting for November sixteenth regarding a plowing contract. Mecca, do you wanna take it from here or you?
No, here you're just a special town meeting, so you just.
But did? It did, but it's yeah, but it's a but it's special, yeah, yeah.
The our select board agenda, no, it's so you should just start with a special town meeting right with this.
Say I read into it. All right, back he's gone.
First order of business, you need to nominate a moderator. Um, but I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion, Lorraine Farady. There's moderate.
I'll say.
So three of you have a little stuff of paper up front if you can vote for your choice of moderator.
Just. Just. Yeah, it's kind of a law here, I guess, I don't know. Mine had a dimple chat on it.
Oh, it is, sorry. All right, we have three votes for Lorraine. All right.
Three counts.
That way, fine, yeah. All right. I am in very good square, I will support the Constitution of the United States and their good faith, so long as they can save your lives and goodness and arrow and help you God. And very good square, I will think on his star should the best of my abilities, the different conundrums as moderator. The special town meeting over the first time, according to the Constitution of the United States and the laws of the state of Maine and Carter and ordinance of the handle for the whole of the day. Thank you, thank you. All right, that was article one. Anybody who has not been here before exits are there, the bathrooms are out there. I have to tell you that. Good evening, um, so article two. To see if the town will vote to appropriate thirty two thousand five hundred dollars from the undesignated fund balance for public works. This represents an unexpected change in the winter maintenance contracts for plowing roads and the downtown area. The public works committee is recommending the current contract be extended two years as provided. And to agree to the final four year contract terms fiscal year twenty three contract amounts, both contracts, the current one is. Two hundred and sixty three thousand four hundred and sixty three dollars and seventy cents. And the proposed is two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars, eight hundred and sixty sixteen and ninety two cents. Do I hear a motion to accept article two?
I make a motion, we accept. Article two.
Second?
No, second.
All right, any discussion on this?
Yeah.
Okay, your dentist got a resident. Okay, do you wanna come up and sit at the table because the microphone goes to the TV stations?
First of all, I want to state that ninety five percent of the time current contract does more than a satisfactory job on the roads. Um, last so far. Couple of things, I I don't know why we're talking about this right now, um, fuel costs went up last spring. I I guess I was always under the assumption that a town contractor or a contract. When you sign your name on it, you were gonna provide the service for that price. We got, you know, unless there's something in there that says fuel increase, salt increase. That protects the contractor. So. I guess. What does the town's attorney say? Do they have to provide this service at that price as a contract? I it's legal, I guess, so. Um, furthermore, how are we gonna protect the town in the contract going forward with contracts? Um, with anything in town? Um, so this doesn't happen again. And. I guess I I'm wondering how they came up, uh, came up with a projected cost, how this money came up projected. The thirty one thousand or whatever it was. So.
Sorry, I should I should have asked you to state your name.
John Pinkham.
And your street address.
Three forty six Egypt Road, Demerita.
Okay, I'm covered now. So I guess Mr. Pinkham is asking for a little background discussion, one of which would be, I I believe the selectman did contact town attorney. Regarding that.
You're looking at me.
I know. In a nutshell, the answer, yes, um, if, uh, the hard line is that there is a contract and. The contractor could actually adhere to it, um, the board felt. That extending circumstances, um, uh. Allowed us to look into this a little bit closer, um, knowing that there's some huge changes, we've had some other contracts that we've. Had to look into because of the standing circumstances behind fuel costs and material costs and across the board, so. We felt entering into a conversation as opposed to, um, just. We felt it would be a cheaper in the long run or maybe a lesser of evils is the best word for it, I guess, sounds terrible, but. Um, to enter into a good faith conversation, say, okay, is there's a way, is there a way to to appease everybody to, you know, to be able to maybe extend this over time? Um, keep the services, you know, we actually talked about reducing services and 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 changing things here and there, but, um, uh. That was a conversation we felt that we we would enter into with the contractor. Um, we put it on to the public works committee at that point to, you know, have a conversation with the contractor they met to sit down and say, hey, where can we? You know, is there some room to move and what can we do here? And I think the general consensus there was that when I we hear from the general public is that we don't wanna see a reduction in services. Um, and yes, the the symbolizes, yeah, that, you know, the hard line on the contract is. You know, here it is, the work's gotta get done, um, but we all recognize the extending circumstances of the environment we're living in right now. Um, I don't think any of us have have had to have been able to reduce costs or reduce our. You know, without having to to extend prices somewhere to, you know, to to keep our businesses afloat, so it was kind of a. A happy medium where like, you know, where do we, where do we kind of meet in the middle here with the contractor? Yeah, hopefully, I saw many questions, what was it?
Yeah, he answered the attorney, she says, you know, they would have to abide by.
Yeah, yeah, we had, I mean, during took a look at it and and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, but we can, you know, there's, there's, there's room for. The board to extend if we need to, but there's also, you know, there is written language in the contract that that, you know, both the town and the contractor have to adhere to if we wanted to go down that route, so.
Now, how was the projected increase? Come up with, I guess.
The 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 numbers, can you? I wasn't there to me, can you help me out with that one, Andy, with the the projections or?
Sure, yes, the contractor provided numbers, um, when they build their budget for the contracted price, they assume a certain number of events. It's how it was explained to us, um, and there's a certain cost associated with those events and. And based on what what they're looking at for the increase in primarily, oh, I guess it was salt. Prices and fuel prices, labor prices, not to mention the other materials and supplies that have gone up, but. So they came up with whatever they needed to present to us that says, here's the increase in in the costs, you know, for them to continue with the service and. That's what the committee had kind of the board did advise the committee to look at and say, what what can we do? Um, they went look further in it.
But we really haven't. We bought the salt, but we really haven't spent the fuel. We haven't done any plowing yet, so I don't know how you can say. These are projected costs for the year, I mean, this is, this is gonna be a cost for the year when it hasn't happened. I mean, it might rain every day, you may never plow this winter, which it's not gonna happen, but do they come back at the end of the year and hand us money back and say, hey? We didn't, we didn't do anything, so we should return money. I mean. Plowing contracts are a gamble, in my opinion, um, some years you win, some years you lose.
Well, I think to that point, um, and a question you would ask in your original line of questions was, you know, if if the opportunities afforded to the to the board to work with the contractor and renegotiating the contract terms. Uh, for the remaining four years, um, there'd be an opportunity to consider fuel escalators, salt escalators.
And the escalators?
Yes.
Okay, it's gotta go both ways. And and I would think. If you're gonna change a contract like that, a contract this large should go go back out to bed. And. You know, maybe someone. Wants to bid on it, maybe they don't, and they can, you know, and they can adjust their prices more if they want.
And and that was a a consideration too, John, that, you know, at.
Whether they, you know, I don't know which way the vote's going tonight, you know, whether they wanna. Continue the final con, you know, continue the contract. The remainder of it for the price and then increase, or whether they wanna. Do this winner opt out at the end of the year, I I don't know, that's up to them and. It's just, it's. Costs are going up and, you know, it's, you gotta. Whether you cut back services at some point or look at a different option. You know. Providing less service downtown or something, you know, not sweeping everyone's doorstep off for them, you know, it's. I don't get mine done, so. But that's all I had for questions and. I am glad that. The current taxpayer has the plowing contract. So I'm glad we kept it in that.
Thank you, John, yeah. No legitimate questions, I have.
Any other public comments or? Discussion of this? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Those opposed? It's like it's four to three. Wonderful, one, two, three, four. One, two, three over here, and Josh is four. Five, who's the other one?
Five. Four, and you, Lorraine. I counted Andrew as a gap.
Yeah, no, I was counting the no votes.
Oh, so.
All those, okay, let's do it again, all those opposed. That's four, and all those four worth five.
Right, so five, yes.
Five to four, sorry. Been a long days.
I hear you. Our our counting abilities are waning this late.
Why I'm an attorney, not a CPA. All right, um. Hearing no other business for the special meeting, I'm gonna declare adjourned. No objection? All right, there, you're on.
Lorraine.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody. That comes exciting part, first evening, oh. All right, well, with that, uh, we're gonna call the, uh, Demerita Select Board Meeting of November sixteenth to order. Well, let's get right down to business here, I believe we have some, uh, minutes to move and.
Don't actually, we don't, okay, now those haven't come out yet, everything.
I was gonna say, I hadn't seen them.
I didn't see them either, yep.
All right, we're gonna table the minutes, we'll move along to the next one, payroll warrants. Financials, uh, payroll warrant number twenty five, everybody had a chance to.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll warrant.
Second. All right, thank you, Josh, Lou seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, yeah, she carries, yes, you, and we have, uh, accounts payable number twenty six.
I make a motion to approve twenty six.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
So I have a second from Lou. Oh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, I'm out.
Lou, you're out.
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining, we had.
A family member on it, so I can't do one.
Okay. All right, good enough, so. He was in the business side of the way, uh, Andy, we have some citizens comments or anything come in that?
We do.
We've seen the. It was Church Street.
Yes.
Yeah, everybody has a church street packet, I think we've all gone over it and checked it out and whatnot, yeah.
Yeah, so in your packet, you had a, um. A packet of material that came from a resident, um, on Church seventy, seventy Church Street. Um, relating to the Hodgson Street project. Um, ultimately, there's a request to the board, um, to have an onsite meeting on the property with the property owner, um, with me and representative from the board. Um, they'd like to show us everything that is listed in the letter and how they might work, how we might work to solutions and resolutions together, you know, for that Hodgson Street project.
Um, yeah, I mean, as board rep, I'm, I, I cannot be at, I mean, if you set something up when you're onsite meeting, but, uh. Think we're, uh, we're very far along in this project, so as we all are aware, so, but, um, willing to hear the. Uh, the complaint out there, so, yep.
I had, um, shared with our engineer on the project, Andrew Hedrick, um, the copy of this, exact copy as well, so he's aware of it. Um, he's met with the property owner multiple times over the period that you've been planning this project, um, numerous, I think, um. Changes to the design have been factored in or considered, um, and including even this most recent. Um, list of concerns that was raised, um, so I think there's ways to make it work, it just sounds like then we just kind of got to identify what the. Solution will be for, you know, the area in front of that property and move along.
And we're, um, I remember we're pretty close to having this all packaged up and going out to bid, so we've got a, yeah, so. I mean, not a lot of changes can be made, but we'll, uh, we need an onsite visit and.
So you're saying the engineer, uh, had gone over the points that are in the complaint, if you will, or the requests. Was there not an agreement that those were gonna be satisfied or? I think there needs to be a little more clarity from the property owner, given that there's been a few different. Uh, requests over the last few years about the design and where the driveway openings and entrances would be for the property.
Okay.
Um, so this is a new, a new layout, um. For us to consider. And so I think he has a way to satisfy this, as it's requested right now. Um, okay, but I think we need to have the property owner give us a firm. Definitive answer on where she wants her entrances, you know, I would ask her to consider applying for a driveway permit if she wants to remove the current driveway. And reestablish a new opening, or different ones, that way it's clear for us to move forward. Um, so I think the design wise, they can incorporate it, we just need to know what is the final request and what does it put on us for project cost if it changes?
Well, right, that's a, that's a big question, so, yeah, it's, it's pretty well tied up there, so we don't wanna. Go off too far, so, all right, thank you, Andy. Uh, anything else for correspondence or anything? Not that I recall.
Nothing, all right, I don't see any, no hands up there, definitely, I don't see anybody, okay. All right, we can move on to your town manager items, you've got some updates for us on capital projects.
Yes, uh, we anticipate hearing back from, I didn't type any of this up, uh, we anticipate hearing back from E D A this week about the. The change of scope for the downtown parking lot project, so the committee met about a couple of weeks ago now, I think it was, and so. Um, the contractor that we're working with for E D A is, let us know that we should hear something more substantial this week, so. I'm hoping that that comes back positive and that we've got the green light to kind of move forward with that revised scope.
Yeah.
Peter Road, uh, we'll talk later on the meeting about the possibility for appropriating some funds from the reserve account to make the, some road improvements, road surface improvements there, but. I'm still wrapping up a few, just two signatures, the Hanaford property, um, the, I made a call last week to them and they just returned it, I think yesterday or today, so I gotta. Follow up on them and then I think it's just the Billings Cole property, which I've already talked to and said I'd come back once I got the rest of them. Um, so hopefully we can wrap that up before. Too long here, before it's too late. Um, head of Safety Works, um, I think that's for the, for the capital projects, I mean, that's for the most part of the updates we have on those, other than what we'll cover in here. Um, any other questions on capital projects? You're curious about?
No, 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 I think we're good.
Uh, Safety Works DPW assessment, um, included a, a portion of the assessment from Safety Works, they came out a couple, a couple of weeks ago now, um. October fourteenth, almost a month ago, um, and went through and we started going down the checklist, um, Josh, of course, is familiar with. The checklist through the fire department's process and their shape certification, so. Um, it was a voluntary request for them to come take a look, they've been here before, um, and so there's a, a small list of things to work on, a lot of it we kind of have, it's just. It wasn't in a place where it was easily accessible for her, there's, there are a few things that we do need to. Fix, um, something as small as the, the first aid kits need to be stocked with more, you know, updated.
Up to date, yes.
And. I think the, there was a couple of policies that she wanted to see that we didn't have easily found, but we do have them, so they do need to be updated, um, and reflect. Current staff or or new, new procedures, but, you know, so we'll work through that, um, she usually gives you sixty days to respond with a satisfactory completion of those items, so we're working on those now.
At least you know where you're staying, you know, where your weak point is and where your strengths are.
It is a start, I think she, we went through about a third of the checklist and, um, so we'll continue on the rest, but we'll focus on this for now and then. Yeah, take the next chunk of it, so.
That's a start, yeah.
And then, um, just follow up on the. Winter maintenance contract, I don't know if in terms of next step following that special town meeting. Um, with the approval of the additional funds from the undisputed fund balance. Um, what the board would like to do for its next step, I did prepare a memo for you in there. I didn't know what your thoughts on next steps, I want to get it.
That's, no, that's the, um. Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. Where'd you hide the memo, Andy, I saw it in there.
It was right after that safety report.
Is it?
Oh, yeah, it should be page twenty seven in the packet.
Yeah, yes.
Need an index.
Yeah.
Did number the pages at.
Yeah.
He said, yeah, so. Yeah, so, yeah, I read the memo, I was just trying to find it, I like having in front of me, so, yeah.
I mean, in a, to summarize it. Now that the vote's been made. And I assume the next step would be to bring in, I don't know if you wanna do it through the. The Public Works Committee again, or through me with the, in the contractor with the proposed revisions and then have the board. Consider those presumably before the next meeting, um, try and finalize that, or if you wanna try and, how you wanna work that out? Especially with the holiday in there.
Yeah.
There were, well, there's a fair amount to consider.
Right.
The detail was, was done by the Public Works Committee, so it should go back.
Yeah.
I mean, they had the detailed discussion, so they have the most knowledge, so they ought to be dealing.
Yeah, I would think that'd be the best route.
Whatever you wanna do.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yep, um, it'd just be a matter of how soon you guys can meet, whatever, you know.
The public works committee.
Yeah, yeah, which would be, yeah, Josh, Lou.
Present, present that contract to the board at the, at a next, the next one, over the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, there's, there's only a couple of things we're changing anyway, right?
Yeah.
The fuel circuit breaker and the salt. Thing, pretty much, it's been an extension of the years.
Right.
Yeah. It'd be good to finalize that and make sure that there weren't. Other items that came up at the Public Works Committee or the contractor was talking about and.
Yeah, I think pretty much if you're gonna, we shouldn't reinvent the wheel, so keep it as simple as we can.
Yeah.
And that'll be nice, yeah, so if you guys are all, the Public Works Committee, just have a quick meeting, whatever, if you guys are all happy with it, then.
I mean, it's pretty well been talked about within here and.
Yeah.
At our last public works meeting anyway, so.
So your schedule is worse than mine. So you set up the time and date.
Usually Tuesdays. Is when we do, uh. Wednesday, maybe we do Tuesday afternoon or Tuesday. Something, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, that would be good.
I just gotta figure out when I gotta take my daughter to basketball this week.
Yeah.
Seems we have to go to Bristol now to play.
Well, yeah, so that's good, let's do that, just have the. Committee, you guys can just, uh, make sure it's all. So it's.
Wow, check, check with George, see when he's around too.
Yeah, I'll follow up, it's, it's, it's helpful to know that, you know, we want to go through that as a quick.
Yeah.
Review and then bring it to the board.
It shouldn't be a long meeting for you guys, so, okay, yeah, thank you.
It's always having the contractor there also.
Uh, presumably, they certainly would be, I think that'd be helpful to have contractor there just to try and close that as quick as possible.
I I just gotta figure out whether or not I get, if I get a transport my kid down to Bristol to play basketball, so.
Well, maybe you'll, you'll.
And they.
Probably, probably, if we didn't like tour. Probably, probably if we didn't like two o'clock, maybe see what George says, two o'clock on Tuesday. That might give me some time, but.
All good.
Oh, you only missed two.
Make sure the notification and the calendar alert's ready.
Alright, sounds good. So move on with that.
All we have to worry about is if it's still.
Well, there is a current contract.
I won't, I won't be there. Oh, boy. Alright, Andy, where are we? Go through your code enforcement items.
Yes.
Okay, so then move into official action items now, if you'd like. Andy's okay with that. We have a. Abatement to uh move along. Is already. Pretty clear cut. I'm just gonna take a look at that.
Yeah, one of your, one of our assessor agents prepared a memo uh for the board to consider. Uh an account adjustment to one of the real estate accounts. He outlined uh the reason for that. Um. First, it comes to the select board because it's beyond a certain period of time. Um and that. In this instance, there's a case where the the former owner of the S E C house uh had been removed.
Oh, yeah.
Uh years ago.
Okay, yeah.
They no longer reside on that property. Um so. You know, it's been since the twenty twenty one tax year and. I think what they, what the assessors did is if they explained it to me, right, was that. They still kept that assigned to the the. The same account number that the new owner is now assigned to. And so it looks as though that person's in default, but it really should have been a whole new account. So. Um they're proposing, they're suggesting or recommending that the the board is the select board and. You know, correct this account and basically. Write off that amount for the twenty twenty dash one amount of two hundred and fifty four dollars and thirteen cents is uncollectible.
Straightforward, yeah. Right. Well, I'll motion, I'll make a motion that, see if I can mess up the abatement motions I've got there last. Get the wrong numbers and.
Alright, let me finish my motion first.
Say account seventeen ninety eight.
Yeah, yeah, I'll uh I'll make a motion to approve a an account adjustment uh as presented by the assessor's agent. For twenty twenty, twenty twenty one tax assessment for R E seventeen ninety eight for a total abatement of two hundred and fifty four dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
And Tom's gonna second. Alright, any discussion?
All those in favor? Alright, that carries. Thank you. Um, Andy, we have an update on code enforcement. Looks like we.
We uh. We do.
Yep.
Um, so I think I've all reached out to all of you. Um the our code officer um had resigned. Back on November third, um in the morning, in perspective immediately. Um by the end of the day, um George Chase had come in. He's the current, is the current new uh C E O, L P I for Newcastle and Edgem. Um and said he understood that we might be looking for someone. Um small towns, no. Um and so uh he left as our interim C E O, as I appointed him as interim and said that, you know, give us a chance to work for at least a week. And see how it goes and make sure it sounded good for him and worked for us. And so here we are. Asking the board to um appoint George Chase as our code enforcement officer, plumbing inspector and addressing officer.
Takes us years to find employees in place and have them walking in the door.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to appoint George Chase as second. Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Tom. Any discussion? All those in favor?
No, that's alright.
Do we have an alternate?
Uh we don't have an.
Not right now, right?
Yeah, I think in the past we've had a deputy uh code enforcement officer. Um, I think, you know. We got this one at least filled for now, so we'll focus on this. But yeah, it wouldn't hurt to probably have. Um in the past, we've had that just to check in. Um I had thought of reaching out to him uh previously as a service deputy.
I get you, yeah.
Um, I know Bristol code officers.
Rose.
Possibly. Yeah, so I can reach out if we still want to try and get that filled, just in case we need to entering, you know, someone in the short term for something.
Just curious, was there any background to the the uh sudden departure of the other one?
Um, I think I'll just leave it at there was a message received that they'd resign effective immediately.
Alright, that worked out well, so. Overlap with the towns there too and working with Newcastle, so. Alright, we have an agreement uh with Lincoln County uh C E O on the Animal Control Officer Agency. Was that backwards? And this is the town manager signs this one, right?
No.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
They could have a spot on there um to sign by the town. So if if you do have your motion, direct me to sign on your behalf.
I'll make a motion to approve the Animal Control Officer Agency Agreement with Lincoln County and have the town manager sign on on behalf.
Second.
Right, who's gonna second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, motion carries. Okay. Andy Heater Road. Mm-hmm, just a little. Background there, what the plan is. We've had some updates to heater road. Uh so far, right? We get some grading done or?
Uh we did do some grading uh over a week ago, I think it was. Um it was just uh it was getting really bad. Um you know, I figured where we're in, we've been in talks to make this, you know. That that portion of public way for a while now and that there was a clause in the state statute that allows us um, you know, to fix a road if there's a concern for emergency. Response to get. So I figured it was okay to have to have that done because it was getting really bad. Um and we're property owners along that road, so. Um. That was just to kind of try and smooth it out and kind of cut the curse, if you will, on what was happening through there. Um so my understanding on the effort here, and you'll have to help me fill in any gaps or correct me if I'm missing. Understanding this, but just to take over that first nine hundred feet, I believe it was, put a bus stop in. Um and, you know, create a cutout on our property for the mailbox um area. So it gets from, it's moved from. Uh Biskie Road in onto Heater Road. Um sounds like that would be a much better setup for the. Uh the person delivering the mail as well as the residents picking up their mail because. Um appears a lot of them kind of cross over the line and pick up their mail from their vehicle and. If if they were walking, it's a dangerous place to walk across anyways at times. So um. Try to estimate and looked at, we had an estimate from twenty twenty. What, twenty twenty? Um it was an estimate that covered six hundred feet of road work. Um I believe it was for approximately twelve thousand dollars. So we were going a little bit longer now. Um prices have increased a little bit, so I tried to estimate what I thought it would be. Um based on, you know, the amount of material that I had talked to. Someone about what we thought we would need there, about two hundred yards of material. Um and I, so I wasn't sure how far we wanted to go or what you were thoughts were on. You know, the type of improvement you were talking about. Um it does need some shape. It does need some better material on that surface if it's going to be worth anything. Um. Whether.
The the plan was to. Um shape it, grade it and put reclaimed asphalt down. That was the plan.
Yeah, that was a couple of years ago.
We never weren't, we weren't gonna pave it.
Mm-hmm.
And we were gonna go to the. Area where the town approved to take it over. We weren't gonna go any further than that. And then as far as the mailboxes, uh we'd make that little area, but we, they can put the, they put in their own mailboxes in there.
Right.
And so. So when I think we had it budgeted. For that. Uh I just can't remember if it was the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
Yeah, it looked like it was from from um mass notes from previous years on capital planning. It looks like it, he had it earmarked to come from the the paving. What he called paving drainage and maintenance reserve.
Yeah.
Yeah, um and that's where this.
That was eight, with eighteen five or.
Right. So appropriating it, you know, at town meeting to go in the reserves, one thing, and I I didn't try and go back and look at all the board meetings to see if you would authorize. The expenditure. Um because the town approves the. Allocation of those funds to the reserve and then the board would.
Mm-hmm.
Um authorize the expenditures of the reserve funds.
Yeah, I think it was in that reserve fund and it was approved during that budget cycle or whatever. So. It's still sitting there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so do you think this board's already authorized?
I if it's already been approved, it was already budgeted and I think it was already approved. It's still sitting in that account. It was all, when we had a public works, it was part of the budget.
Approved, yeah, for that.
Yeah. And then we had it, we we thought we may have it timed up when we did the backside of the firehouse.
Hmm.
To admit when we milled that, grinded that down and use that, but at the timing did not work, so. We missed out on that.
Yeah, we don't stop those millings, huh?
No.
Those were ours.
Go find them.
Yeah.
We sold it for eighteen five to Newcastle.
Yeah, so so this will get us. Yeah, oh.
We gotta go ahead.
Come on up.
You gotta come up here.
The mic off, yeah.
John Pinkham, three forty six Egypt. So the town's taken over or already took over a portion of the heater road.
In the, working in the process.
Okay.
Process now.
So. But you haven't, you mentioned nine hundred feet, you mentioned twelve hundred feet. I mean, how far out is the town building, I guess? Is that?
Well, it it was approved at town meeting, I think it to go to Hutchins. Was it Hutchins Lane? And then they wanted to have us do it to Barstow, but we, the the. The way the wording of the article was, it was to uh Hutchins and that's where we stopped.
Yeah, because it's under my assumption that any road that the town was gonna take over. Whether it be a subdevelopment road, had to be, there had to be certain standards mapped before the town would take it over, including paving. So. Um. I guess, I know we use the road heavily, heavy traffic more than anyone out there. So I mean, we're. Responsible for a lot of. Some, you know, damage, but we're not responsible for all of it. So. Um, I guess as a taxpayer. I don't want to spend. More go out further than. What we should be because. Because it's not accessed by, you know, emergency vehicles can't access it. Well. We have camp roads that you can't get emergency vehicles down in the springtime. Are you gonna come out and fix ours? I mean.
Yeah.
Um, it's not got, you know, you know.
The um.
My taxpayer money shouldn't be going to spend on private people's land.
And I I think that's the way it was resolved at the town meeting. That we would not. Take and go beyond that point.
Yeah.
Onto private.
Um, the six hundred foot measurement, that is that to the? That's what was on an estimate from, that was back in twenty twenty.
Right, yeah.
What that was, yeah. Speaks to how long we've been talking about this. It sounds like from what you're saying that it's already been approved by the voters to take on the nine hundred feet. Sounds like there's already a plan that's been approved to put in the bus stop, the make those improvements and that perhaps has already been. The approval of the expenditure of the funds to do those improvements. So. So I think that John, John's point, yeah, if we take over the nine hundred feet, we're responsible for the whole nine hundred feet.
Yeah.
And that, and they're gonna be aware that anyone in their brother can go out there.
Well, there's.
Because it's a public way.
Yeah, on that first part, yeah.
Yeah, so they can't, you know, some people going out there turning around all the time. They can't. No complaints, I mean, because it's a public way now.
Hmm, and 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 another, and another part of the. Uh of this is is that they always used to come through with their own piece of equipment, trying to fill the potholes in with a. York rate towed behind a four wheeler or something, then that needs to stop too, um if we're gonna do it.
Yeah, yeah. But there's a, yeah, a high amount of uh. Town use on that road for the town.
Town, town equipment.
Yeah, yeah, so.
You know, so I, you know.
Yeah.
I see going out that far, but I don't see. You know, why we should be going beyond it, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, how far? I I don't know what the measurement, how far beyond the um, because Hutchins Lane is in, that's, that should be nine hundred feet.
I think that's the nine.
That's the nine hundred foot mark, yeah, right, roughly, John. So the, is this. That's not three hundred feet back with a six hundred foot estimate. That must be just a section of the road, right?
I I'm guessing that that six, I'm I'm just guessing. Again, this is twenty twenty.
Right.
I found.
Yeah.
Sorry if it was too much detail. Because originally it was supposed to go to the town. Shed and that's where we're gonna stop. And then the petition or the came in that to go to Hutchin, Hutchins and then. We proved that, put that on the warrant.
That went out the warrant, yeah, yeah.
But I'm just one person, so if the town votes to do it.
And, yeah, no, we appreciate your concern, John, because it is, uh, you know, it it does affect uh the tax dollars, so.
Because I know some, some uh house developments have looked at trying to. Give the road to the town, but they don't want all the traffic down there.
Yeah, 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 it was a concern there. So I will try to limit it to the. To that section there, you know, um and that's kind of that, the um. The eighteen five that covers, I mean, that's just, that's bottle, bottle work and getting the road up to standard that it's passable, right, for the, for the seasons, that what uh.
So I'm estimating that to, that would include two hundred yards of material to kind of raise up that section between our drive and go heading back towards. Uh Biskie Road.
Yeah, that section.
Spot there that I from I understand gets pretty muddy in the spring.
Yeah.
Um so trying to bring that up with better material. So, in theory, what we should do is when we mill Belvedere Road and Mill Egypt Row, we should take the mellons and. You know, it's basically our material. I think it's, does that say that in the SPAC too?
I don't know.
We should use that.
Yeah.
You know, if we.
If it's not incorporated.
Thinking ahead.
Yeah, I I think for a good chunk of Belvedere, it's gonna be just incorporated in the road base.
Right, but if something, if something happened, you know, down the line and we could get it.
There'll be sections on Egypt Road that will be just milled, so there'd be certainly some. I presume that would just be able to be left on our site and then incorporated in there. Now Josh is, yeah.
I don't care, as long as we can put it and save some money.
Well, okay, and then the, so the estimates I put in there for the um. Area to create the the pad, if you will, for the mailbox system to have someone else put a mailbox system up on, if we're creating that. Area to pull off on and have that put in um on our property and then the. Um cost of the school bus turnaround based on the footprint of it. So I'm assuming that a certain amount of material at a certain depth. Um at a certain price based on recent bids that we've gotten. But it sounds like you've already approved the.
The eighteen five, you think is sufficient to do all that?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'd I'd almost asked the board if they wanted to, even if you had to prove, I don't know what that amount was for before. Um.
That was, that was for the doing reclaimed asphalt all the way out through.
Right, but if there was actually a dollar amount assigned to, because typically if you're gonna be asked to.
No, we just had that.
You put a number on.
Right, we just use that as a budgetary item line, so.
Yeah, so it wasn't, wasn't a. For that particular um project. If I remember right.
Based on some, I think Hook has had given us an estimate when they did the firehouse.
Yeah, I think it was. Either them or someone else.
I remember, Josh, you can correct me, um there was reclaim that was. Uh. There was another area.
Donated, right, but it never.
Never materialized.
Never materialized, so yeah, though, but I think the installation was gonna be more than the reclaim was or something. Okay, yeah, there was. Some free reclaim.
Yeah.
Didn't work out.
So this number that I've estimated doesn't include whatever the reclaim amount would be.
Okay. Uh, we got a hand up on the back corner there, but yeah. You you gotta.
Just, you know, six forty one, the center of Keterwood. From Biskie Road to the center of the township. Six forty one.
Okay, so to the, the turnout for the.
Center of the.
Yeah, okay.
Where your nine hundred feet is.
With the six hundred, right, that's with the. Two hundred, two hundred and fifty approximately to get to where the end of what we'll have will be. Yeah, so that makes sense where we have the, that was the estimated six hundred feet of work would bring us to the town road going into the shed. So, and that's the worst part of the road anyway, right? That's the, yeah, so, okay. Mm-hmm, that's it, yeah. Alright, thank you, Zach, yeah, okay. Um. Alright, uh any more discussion on that or we wanna? Get a little page on there. Would you like us to make a motion and? That authorize you to get something moving on that or?
Yeah, I mean, you can.
I don't. I'm just not sure what's been approved before, if there was a dollar amount tied to that, and if there's not enough. Um but I I'll, I can take the time to, I'll just go back and see what that may have been. And if it wasn't, we'll have to wait till December or potentially the spring to. Put the material in.
Yeah, I think it was just on, we use that as a number for the, for a plan, a road plan.
Hmm, yeah.
Because it was in. That's been there for quite a while.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And it was just a placeholder and we put it in there and.
So we could just have, we could just proceed, right? We don't need a motion on the exact amount or? So again, my understanding with the, with the expenditure of your reserve funds that the voters created the reserve fund for, and then at town meeting. There's an amount of money that's requested to appropriate into those reserve um funds. In order to allocate and spend the money of those reserves, the board has the ability to appropriate and use those funds.
Okay.
But you would have had to vote on, voted on that, probably at a regular meeting.
So let's confirm that that happened. So let's confirm that that happened.
Right, yeah, that's, uh.
I assumed it may not have, and, um, I didn't go back and look, so I will go back and look.
Okay, yeah.
All right, fair enough, anyway.
But it just means we might be putting it off to potentially the spring, depending on weather between now and the next meeting.
Yes.
So.
Okay, well, we'll make sure we do it right.
Yep.
So, okay. Fair enough, so. Table that, do we find out what, what transpired? Right. We have a couple of cemetery deeds. Now the ordinary there. Hmm. All right. Um, we'll make a motion, uh, to approve and sign cemetery deed and perpetual care contract for lots one oh nine, one ten, and one eleven, located in Hillside Cemetery Annex Two.
Second.
Move seconds, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Right, motion carries, and I'll move, uh, the cemetery deed and perpetual care contract for lots one one zero four, one one zero five, and one one zero six, uh, located in Hillside Cemetery Annex Two.
Second.
Move seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Did you?
I hear you.
You did, okay, yeah, that's all five, uh. All right. Anybody else set on official action items?
Uh, we had, um, should be seven on your.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the other page, yeah, yeah. So we have the emergency fuel supply.
And then we, and I'd propose that if you're willing to accept an another item after that for Egypt Road, Andrew Hedrick, I believe, hopefully is still on.
Okay.
Um, and can help kind of walk through some of those thoughts and follow on up on that bid that we put out.
That's fine, yeah, okay. So as far as you had provided a memo here, um, with some, uh, discussion with, uh, our town attorney, Amanda Meter, um.
Yeah, there was a request, um, well, you know, um, county, Knox, Lincoln County EMA, um, in working with Kobe and Gail, um, with the concerns currently around the forecast for fuel supplies for this winter, I'm just trying to get it out ahead of things and make sure, um, something happens, you know, that the the facility in town needs to be monitored, um, you know, that they're looking and just make sure they've got all those types of agreements in place. And so the agreement would be with, with, would be with our town and our police department to provide, um, you know, kind of security or monitoring services on the, on the uh, property on Biski, where there's big fuel supplies, um, and it's not to suggest that there's going to be a problem, it's just trying to, again, get out ahead of it based on the current forecast for fuel supplies that that they're seeing. I know there were shortages on K one and and other supplies already, and hopefully that improves, but they just want to kind of get out ahead of things. And and so I had our attorney just review that, and when it gets to the liability part of the contract, um, especially, um, and then I actually started because I didn't think it was something that I or the police chief could sign without the board's approval, actually, and then it turned into the other parts of the contract being kind of looked at and a little closer. And so, um, you have Amanda's, our attorney's, um, thoughts on it, as well as MMA Risk Management Services thoughts, who is our insurer, um, they just are suggesting a couple of quick additions, and Amanda was working on it today, um, I didn't have it before, um, we walked in the door here, so, um, but she's recommending that you kind of approve it conditionally based on these recommendations as she'll add those in, and then, um, I think the county may have signed it already, but we'll have to kind of go back to them with the revisions, um, if the board approves them, um, as they're highlighted there, um. And we'll go forward from that if that works for the county and the other parties.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency fuel and coordination agreement, uh, with the stipulation that the attorney, or town attorney's comments be included.
Second.
Move seconds, any discussion? Hang on, I got, I got a motion in the table, yeah. Um.
I second.
You seconded, okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, all right, I'm going to abstain, this got what we got written all over it, so I'm going to stay on that one, so, all right, um.
I have a question about that motion.
Okay, yeah, come on up, yeah.
That's the first I had. Seth Hager, four oh one Bristol Road in Bristol, but my question is, is does that motion strictly for town vehicles in the event that something happens?
This is more.
For the agreement.
Well, this is more of a, make sure things don't get stolen.
Yeah, it's more to protect the facility as much.
Okay, because I just haven't seen the light. My question is, is how it would interface with private enterprise that conducts town business, and if that was incorporated into the language?
Now, this isn't just, this is just more of a protection, site protection more than it is.
Allowance of fuel restriction or anything like that.
Yeah, that's what I gather from this.
Yeah, okay.
I just, all right, because I just, and I know there's some weird interface there between
Yeah.
private enterprise and public, if we get to the point where we're regulating how fuel works, I just.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Security, security.
Yeah, no.
Security. Facility protection, basically.
Uh huh, okay. Have you, um, have you read, have you seen the?
No.
Okay.
That, and that's why I had a question.
Andy, where would somebody find that agreement? Is it, do you have it, is it posted, they can get it off the board packet, or?
Don't think I posted the board packet, but it's certainly a document that's available and can be, I could share.
Yeah, okay.
We should consider this in the Public Works Committee only because we've had history on this board and in prior boards with certain government issues coming out, i.e. declarations of emergency and stuff with monies being shared and the conflict between private enterprise and town government. For example, we've had situations in the past where we've had to apply for federal aid, had to have private people do it since you don't have a Public Works Committee, provide the resources, and then you folks get the money. Um, so if we get to a fuel situation where we're going to regulate fuel, we'll have to really sit down and work together, because I don't have the same authority that you folks do as a municipality, because I'm technically a private enterprise.
Right, right.
And if fuel isn't afforded to us to be able to work in a public way, that might be a conflict. So it's something for the Public Works Committee to consider in our revision to our fuel clause that allows, you know, fuel for the town, for those essential means to be incorporated into it.
Yeah, so it, this is, yeah, that's something, again, I mean, kind of what's in your outlining, you know, the EMA office would have to declare some sort of emergency regarding the fuel supplies as laid out in here, and then how they go with that next step is something we'd have to talk with our fuel supplier about.
Absolutely, because we used to have an emergency declaration in that, and I just, you know, it's worth noting now, if we're going to see that type of complication, maybe we should tackle that.
Something to consider, and, yeah, thank you. All right. Seven, and Andy had one more for us, right?
Yeah, uh, it came up last minute, um.
This is not on our back.
On Tuesday, I mean, uh, so it's Egypt Road, we've got Egypt and Belvedere Road, we put out to bid for work to be done mostly in the spring. There was a possibility that some, some work might be done this fall. Um, we've been Andrew Hedrick and I and.
Got Andrew on tonight.
Seth, uh, have been, uh, working slowly, albeit towards, uh, finalizing a contract terms, you know, there was some some consideration for some modifications or changes to what we put out to bid, some additions, maybe some changes to what was in there. I know, um, uh, we had a meeting with Andrew and Seth a couple of weeks ago scheduled, and Josh was able to attend. Um, after the meeting, Andrew and I went out and drove Egypt Road, and then I believe he went out and drove it a couple more times after that. Um, so there were some areas that we wanted just to, again, make sure we're not going through and agreeing to something, and then having a whole bunch of change orders. And so we just wanted to try and button all that up from what we could tell. And so one of the things that was proposed was an overlay or a shim coat put on Egypt Road between, uh, Rocky Run in Biski. And so that request came in, given the timing of the year, the temperatures, and the, um, low availability of supplies or the calendar to go get that, um, and I asked Andrew if he could help, uh, present on that and provide a recommendation, um, because I don't have a lot of, all the information I need to provide it to you, so.
Okay, yeah, we can bring Andrew in. Andrew, how you doing?
Good evening, how is everybody?
So. Yeah.
You all hear me?
We got you, hang on a second. All right.
Sound off.
Let me try it again.
Andrew, we can't hear you yet, yeah, hang on a second, Andrew.
Thank you, I think you had him on mute, uh, TV on mute.
Maybe, yeah, there's no mute signal up there, but.
Yeah, now it's okay.
Yeah.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you, but can you hear me?
There we go, we can hear you now, Andrew.
All right, there we go, excellent, excellent. So yes, uh, we, we have.
We lost you.
Lost him, I am.
Nope, hang on, Andrew.
I unmuted myself.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so, uh, as, as Andrew was saying, uh, we visited, revisited Egypt Road just to make sure we were addressing all the items out there. Uh, when we originally sent this out to bid, uh, we knew there were going to be some additional work associated with the project, uh, which is why we requested unit pricing, uh, for the project in general, for everything that was going to be applied. Um, and then we revisited the road after bizrin, uh, to try to refine these numbers before we, uh, finalize the uh, the bid, uh, that we received. Uh, there were a couple of sections that we saw that need some additional work. Uh, one of those sections, uh, is the, uh, between Biskay Road and past, uh, a rocky run there, there's about a twelve hundred foot section of road through there that is severely rutted, uh, degraded, um, and it needs to be, uh, it needs to be reclaimed, basically using full depth reclamation through that full section. There's another section of cedar in between Cedar Lane and Cohen Lane that also would benefit from full depth reclamation. Uh, the reason that's being recommended at this time is, you know, after looking at these roads a little closer, knowing uh, the challenges of milling the road, uh, and understanding that it may, it may kind of degrade quicker, uh, if we don't reclaim the material in those areas, so everybody listening, the full depth reclamation is when you grind up about a foot deep of the road mid base and the asphalt on the surface to kind of reinforce the surface, the material that's there, and then you apply additional asphalt when you're done. It kind of thickens up the road base and improves the structural number, and it makes a more long-term road. Uh, so rather than just mill those sections, we are recommending at this point to do a full depth reclamation. Um, I think we work with, uh, Hagar, uh, the potential contractor on that project, uh, review what they can get done in a day with the machine that they have to rent, the reclamer, and then try to stretch those two areas as much as we can, uh, between, again, the Biski Road intersection there up to Rocky Run and between Cedar uh, Lane and Cohen Drive there. But prior to that, kind of dealing with the item at hand, uh, the section, uh, adjacent to the Rocky Run uh, road there is, it is degraded, there are, there is rutting over there, and it would greatly benefit from, uh, putting a shim coat down immediately, uh, so that that can be stabilized for winter. Uh, the material won't go to waste, it will be ground in and reclaimed with the road, improving the structure after this is all said and done. Uh, it will improve the plowing, it will make it a little safer through that section, uh, as winter goes. So that was the worst section for the ruts. Uh, as it's coming apart, that really needs the plows. A problem with those roads, as you all know, when they're not uniform and they have severe rutting, ice and snow gets packed down in those ruts, and you can't get rid of it after it starts. Uh, so getting a shim coat down through there to try to level that off, uh, for the, the short term here would be very beneficial. Um, in addition to the full depth reclamation, there's probably uh, four or five other locations that we identified, uh, that would benefit from some additional shim work that we originally didn't call out and identify. Um, there's a section by Hofstra's Beach Lane, Woods Lane, uh, just south of Willow Lane, and then, uh, towards the entrance of the back metal road, there's a few sections scattered uh, throughout there, that's about a thousand feet that we're going to recommend some additional shim work. Um, and then on top of that is some ditching through there. We haven't really identified exact locations on that. Uh, we will have to field adjust some of those ditching, but, uh, it's pretty apparent out there, Andrew and I were looking at these areas, we know where it needs to happen, it'll be clear to the contractor where, where it needs to happen, and we can kind of work with them as we go forward, but I would recommend putting all that on the table, uh, presenting that to Hagar to have them, uh, look at their numbers. Uh, we do have unit prices again for asphalt, so we know what their asphalt price will be for the the additional paving. Um, we know what a reclamer costs, uh, generally speaking, uh, to run for the day, so uh, I would recommend having them incorporate those, those areas that we have updated, if you will, into the contract prior to, uh, signatures, so that we can try to get a, a handle on the final contract amount rather than leave too many items uh, open-ended. But, uh, in the, in the short term, I think we can work on that contract as we go forward, but in the short term, I would highly recommend uh, approving Hagar to, uh, to put that shim coat on down by Biski Road and the Rocky Run a road so that we don't lose the opportunity right now to, to have that, uh, shored up, uh, prior to, uh, finalizing the contract here.
Okay. So Andrew, you're proposing, yeah, shim coat for going before winter and the reclamation on the other end of the project, uh, you know, later in the
Exactly, the reclamation will happen, uh, in the spring of next year when they can, when they start the project up, we'll do all the improvements at the same time simultaneously, so it'd just be the shim coat now uh, to get ready for winter, prevent the, the ice from forming in the ruts and in the road there.
Yeah.
Andy, Andrew, what, what's the, the thickness of your shim coat you're recommending for that area?
Five eighths to three quarters of an inch. It's just a thin shim coat, they're going to overload it in the in the rutting, and then it'll be a little thinner as it goes through there. So they, they are planning to tack it, so it will be tacked down and it will be secured in place. Um, but we'll try to keep it thin and overload the, it's, it's tough when you shim coat uh, those sections, as you know, you end up getting a, a, a non-uniform, uh, shim coat there, so they're going to try to fill the ruts. Um, and then just get enough on there to, to make it smooth for plowing and, and to shed the water.
It should save on a coal patch for the winter as well, in a manpower time.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I think we'll all agree, that is a rough section of road.
Yeah.
Not sure how they, uh, cut an edges like that, going on that corner, but, yeah, so. John, yes, yeah, I got to get you up here, though, got to come up the mic.
Is it feasible time-wise to get it done before winter, or is it not? We need to know the wrong. Right, oh, that's on tape.
That's, it's a great question, yeah.
They're not going to do it. Should the road commissioner put some, something in it to try to?
Yeah, yeah.
Just keep some water out of it, I mean, it's.
It's bad.
It's bad.
If we can, if, if, we can get it done, yeah.
So.
You all heard that, it's on camera.
I can't hear him, though. Far away from the microphone.
Yeah, so I guess we'll have the contractor come up, the proposed contractor come up here and, and, uh, let's see. Okay, all right. Yeah, we probably should move forward with that, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, um, so you'd be agreeing to getting that shim coat down, and then we still need to, as Andrew was saying, really finalize that that contract now that we've got a, now that we've got a more clearer focus on some of those other additions and.
We're exactly what those sections need, right, because we don't want to, yeah, we want to, want to do it right long-term, so if we can get a shim coat on to get us through the winter and and get a little safer and better for plowing, then work on finalizing the rest of the contract with the reclamation as, uh, recommended, so, um, sounds acceptable to.
Yes.
Yeah, just need a head nod, yeah.
Might be worth.
Making a motion.
Yeah.
We're outside of a contract right now, and we're working on it, but it might be worth a motion, just to be clear that you're giving the green light to do that.
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion that we allow Hager to buy the shim program as stated.
Second. Tom seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, yeah, there's no, yeah, okay, you had your hand up, I didn't call the noble, yeah. Please, that looked like a yes vote, you had your hand up.
I like riding over.
Oh, yeah. So, and we get.
Slows my, slows my white down, driving on the Egypt Road.
Yes, yeah, well, I can sell you shocks then, so. All right, so that motion carries, so we'll get that, uh, yeah, so you're going to, uh, just, the contractor, so you're going to do that tomorrow, you said, have that all shimmed and? Oh, all right then.
Police mom started driving, it's wet. We'll get a little bit.
Yeah. So now, we appreciate, yeah, we all know that road's, that's a pretty hard spot down through there, so, yeah, all right. Go, okay.
You just going to Rocky Run, or you're going down a little bit further?
But I think just sat with it roughly.
It's a good question for.
Yeah, yeah.
Andrew, you right there?
Yeah, I, I'm still here, I did hear the question. Uh, they're proposing to do, uh, what we've, we've discussed doing about twelve hundred to thirteen hundred feet along that section. Um, and it, I don't think you need to start right at the intersection of Biskay Road, there's about a two hundred foot section of the entrance that's in good shape, and that should bring you, uh, based on my rough numbers, a, a, a couple hundred feet beyond the Rocky Run Road and that, the worst section of it all, we I don't think we can do all of it, but it'll get you down around that corner, um, and then, and then we, I think we just got to deal with the rest later on, but that'll get the worst sections.
Yeah, because there is a section from the campground Rocky Run between, it's a small section between there and where the guy has his little garage.
Yeah, yeah.
With the old cars.
Yeah.
If we can get that section done, included in that, that would pretty much take care of the worst parts for the winter. So hopefully that will get, get you down that way. Or skip, skip a little section and do, make sure we finish that little piece too.
That's what I understand they're going to do, is kind of pick the worst sections, fill those, obviously we're not going to shim areas that don't need it, so they'll go and kind of spot treat some of these areas. Areas that, uh, don't need it, so they'll go and kind of spot treat some of these areas, and, uh, it's just a linear length that we've. Reviewed and determined prior to it, and if that gets split up a little bit and shifted around, I, I think that's fine, just as long as we have a handle on how far they're gonna go, and. How much it's gonna cost.
Fair enough. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
All right, any left on there, uh? Sneaking a number nine or a ten or anything?
Sorry, that came.
It, it, it is what it is, it has to happen, so, if it wants to stay there, you can. We, we don't mind, so, um, all right, well, that's it, we'll move on to select four discussion items, we can.
We had to go out of.
What's that?
We have to go out of the select, let's meeting first.
We're, we're, uh, we haven't adjourned yet.
No, we don't want to supplement discussion.
So if anybody has anything.
Yeah, um.
Exciting to say, you know?
We had a CLC board meeting on Monday, and the board decided, um, to budget. To approve a budget which excluded Edgecom, because they're not responding as to whether or not they're gonna participate. And it's, it's. It's not a lot of differences, six thousand dollar difference for us to plan prudently that. Worst case, it's gonna be without it.
Without Edgecom, okay.
Yeah.
It's ninety thousand versus eighty four thousand.
Yeah, so it's not a, yeah, that's it, but it's.
Yes, way below what we had before.
Right, right, so we're still.
We're still.
Yeah.
Unless everybody.
Thank you.
I whispered that to Dick McLean, but I didn't want to make that public.
Thank you, Tom. Lou?
I have nothing.
You got nothing, all righty, move on now, Andrew?
Well, I've been thinking about the property across from Dunkin' Donuts, what is it, four forty five main?
Four thirty five, four thirty five main, yeah.
Whatever that is. Where Camden Bank is.
Yeah, yeah.
Tiff district.
Tiff district, yeah.
Where the Tiff district is, and they were supposed to put in a sidewalk there, and they were supposed to put trees in there, it looks awful. And do we not have a way to enforce this?
There are trees there.
Oh, really?
On the berm.
On the berm.
On the berm planted in there, yeah. Did they have to put a si- a sidewalk or a walkway, I wonder what the language is?
Wow, I, I think there was a required sidewalk there, and then there's a required sidewalk on, uh. By Dollar General, we never. Picked a time to do that, so there's money available in like an escrow type, very minimal.
Right.
Um, and I don't, I don't think it, I don't, I can't remember what it was for the Tiftr district part, um, when they came in with that. Proposal, uh, but I know the base is pretty much there, there's a.
Yeah, they've got a. There's a spot there, yeah, okay.
And that is in escrow.
Okay.
For the, there was some money that the town had taken in for the Dollar General, I'm sure when Williams. Project there.
That wouldn't cover.
At today's price, it probably won't cover the cost, but.
Cost a couple feet, pieces of granite carbons.
Yeah, might get the plans drawn up.
Um, I don't know specifically what the requirements were of the developer at the four thirty five main, but that's something that.
Yeah, maybe we follow by, and just to re, uh, yeah, cuz that's an area too we. Later, we need to kind of look at and see what about development, so it's a good time to maybe re- revisit it and revisit the language, so, yeah. You, Andrew, yeah.
It's just really sad that they put in trees that were so small, they don't even like.
Help with, we'd like to see some more activity there, laws, yeah, taking advantage of that Tiff district, so, yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, though. Josh?
Oh, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody, uh, town staff and townspeople and. You know, thankful for everybody to be on the same team most of the time. I'm all good.
Yeah, thank you, and I, I don't have anything to add this evening, no. Yeah, that's all I've got.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the select minutes portion of the meeting.
Josh can make a motion, second, two seconds, all right. Go.
I have a call.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, he didn't call for a vote, yeah.
That's it, right, what do we have another? Yeah, we get from the board assesses, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That won't take long.
No, no, it'll take long, I, I apologize, cuz I, I forgot it was at the end here, so.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Yeah, all right, so I will, uh.
What was that thing?
Hold on, favor?
I'll, uh, hang on, I gotta open the meeting.
You did.
All right, I'm calling the, uh. November sixteenth Board of Assessors meeting to order, there we go.
I made a motion to approve the minutes before we opened, so.
All right, Josh made a motion to approve the minutes.
And I seconded.
All right, good enough. Okay. Apologize, I don't have, uh. Awesome, Andy, thank you. Yeah, you can have it on. Okay, there we go, beautiful, all right, there we go, so we have a couple of abatements.
Yeah, based on the notes from the assessor's agent, it looks as though the. Um, the business had. Changed ownership. Yep, and they didn't notify, uh, us until after the commitment and billing, so. Um, the same amount that we'd, we'd be considering abating will be supplemented to the new owner.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the abatement as a previous owner of the personal property account number one ninety two Damaskobit Subway. And the amount of two hundred and forty nine dollars and seventy five cents.
Seth.
Lou, seconds, any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, I'll make errors, I'll make a motion for supplemental personal property for the new account. One ninety two Mid Coast Provisions, Inc., in the same amount, I believe, two forty nine seventy five.
Lou, and any discussion? All those in favor? Right, motion carries. All right, um, assuming there's no board discussion items or board assessors? Okay. And do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
One seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? And with that, we have adjourned. We have stuff to sign.
Oh.
We've run away.
I was trying to find those.